I can declare a quorum.
I'm just gonna note for the record, though, that I don't see Johnny's name listed as a board trustee. And even though she isn't here, she is still a board trustee. So I'm just noting that on the record, if we would add in Johnny's name there because she is still a trustee, though absent, and noting then for the record that Sylvia is absent and Cara is also absent. And for the record, this is Jen, Jennifer Yeats' last meeting. As to who will honor her presence here. Public comment, I will also note for the record that our two new trustees are here, in presence to observe our meeting, and welcome them as well. So we have the minutes of the April 2nd meeting. And Brown is here for consideration. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 2nd meeting?
A move.
Your second?
I'll go ahead and give your second.
I will second. Motion, move and second, all those in favor, Nicky, Missy, and I?
Aye.
Motion and seconded and minutes approved. Library policies review, this is a review, this is the second review of finalization of the finance policies that we reviewed on April 2nd and the 16th. Do we have any further discussion or any other issues to raise related to these?
There is one that was included on page eight. Sixteen of the packet, eleven of the policies. Section 1 Part B. The board recommended the language that's highlighted, but they wanted you to confirm to them that this was correct. I think that was the issue.
Or sufficient.
Yeah, like is this the legal language used in the titles?
Yep, that's fine, just the way it is. Perfect.
A plus.
A plus.
I have to apologize, I did have the track changes in there from the comments that you gave to us on the first two meetings. But when we packaged it up in a PDF, for some reason, the tool we use strips them out. So they're all there, and if you'd like the track changes, a version of track changes, I can send it to you.
I don't see any need for that unless people ask it individually. Thank you. Director updates, do we need to approve these? Let's go back to the review, the, or approve, or consider then a motion to approve the finalized financial, finance policies. Is there?
I'm going to approve the finance policies within our packet. Do I need to list them?
As a package?
As a package, all together. The Boulder Public Library District Finance Policies.
I'll second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. How does that?
Thank you.
How does that work? Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
If there's only four of us, is it just like a majority of the?
Quorums.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting, yeah.
Okay. All righty, director updates.
Yes, and earlier I had a whole bunch of stuff, but I, I will, I mean, NOBO is the big one, right? So we are back on schedule, everything is getting ready to go. We have a walk-through next week, I think we'll have the building moved soon. And then, if you remember, right, so once the building has occupancy, it'll start moving in books and furniture and all that other kind of stuff. And then the lease, I'm assuming, will come forth with, so there is an action that the city will take prior to, wait, after occupancy and prior to the lease being signed, doesn't mean we can't move in and whenever we want. It's just they'll subdivide that property so that the road, the plaza, the areas adjacent to the creek will not be included in the lease, it'll just be leasing the building, parking lot, and the later. And I think that is set up to go as soon as the building be at occupancy, and I suspect that occupancy is probably in the next two weeks. So we'll be moving stuff in, we have most of our stuff scheduled to begin going in in May, but obviously there's something going on now, too.
There's a sign I saw.
On Teams.
It's a pretty cool, like, retro sign that they have up there. Is it Deon or?
I know nothing about it, where, where's the CD on sign?
I can show you a picture of it.
Celine posted on Teams like the picture of the sign being sort of slightly peeled off.
Yeah.
Partially revealed.
Exciting.
David's like, I've never seen it.
Well, we have a map in the lease of where our responsibility is, okay.
Sorry, I got drawn up. Oh, cool. No, I didn't see it back when it was.
There shouldn't be any surprise.
No, back when it was in draft form, I'm sure, so yeah.
Can I see it? Oops, sorry, sorry.
Oh my gosh, I don't even remember that. So your next meeting, the 14th, you'll have several things, items of business, but one of the big ones is the marketing communications department. So that's something that you requested, we, you know, we hired the marketing and communications manager, Maria, but it has been interesting in terms of filling that staff out. So we are a little bit behind, but you will get the plan, we're gonna review it next week. I've seen it, but the leadership team will review it next week, and then it'll come to the Board on the 14th. And it's not really waiting for approval, but it's got outline how, you know, broadly an iterative board plan that is to coincide with announcing NOBO, Canyon Theater, Carnegie Cafe, all these different things, and a series of like tactics, really, for how we plan to promote some of those different things, and a built-in plan for gathering more feedback as we go to build out the, you know, proposts and marketing. You'll see that in two weeks. And I don't, I'm sure there must be a million things I was thinking about earlier in the day, but I thought I'd go in there and ask any questions. Oh, I do want to show you this, yeah, so we wrote this. This is a zine, I mean, this is a great program. We do hundreds and hundreds of great programs, but sometimes like there's one that just like jumps out. So this was a program over at Carnegie in partnership with Outbolder and Teams for identified SLGPTQ. And so the Carnegie staff and the program staff here built out a whole thing for them, but they did a zine. And I just thought it was so great, like, when I found out they did it, I said, get me 10 copies, because I want to give them to the, to the board. But it was a great program, the kids were there for half the day, learning about LGBTQ history in Boulder County, which Boulder County has obviously a quite illustrious history. But I just loved what they did, I mean, putting this thing together is just an example of like whatever, 16 or 20 teenagers, a couple of staff members threw together in a, in a great plan for, for an awesome program. So I, it's one of those kind of things that in the future, obviously, we'll be able to crow about more in our work plan, but I love the fact that they published the zine as a result of the program.
What age is, was this?
I think it was 14, 16, 14, 16 teenagers.
I'm gonna go that one, come on, I. For the query. Take my case.
Is there information on that?
It's in the, right here.
Are you guys doing quizzes?
No, he was asking.
For queries?
It's for teenage, like, young adults.
Got it, yeah.
Books.
This is really cool. Yeah.
I, can I share a positive experience I had?
Absolutely.
In the library, I was here on, I don't know what day that was, Friday afternoon, and just sitting in the cafe. I think Josh, the new outreach coordinator guy, and he, as I was standing there, homeless man came up and thanked him, helped him get his ID card and get him into a permanent shelter placement. And he was like really thankful, and it's like, so, just like an impact that we're having immediately is kind of cool. So I think he's only been on the job for like two weeks, so.
Two months, but yeah, Josh is a great, great young man. The program is, you know, it's just in its very early phases, and he's focusing on, you know, handful of individuals helping to put things up. I think, yeah, we'll see how that all goes, I think it's, it's a new position for us, and Josh has developed some great new life. I think he's been in two months. I should also mention, right, so the breakaway fencing has been installed today, and we've considered that a little bit. So the, you know, the, the cabinets around the library had grown pretty heavy, and there's a lot of damage underneath the bridge. And so the, oh, what are they called? The group that does the ordinary cleanups and parks and rec, which Justin said, like, we need to do a massive clean underneath, so massive clean underneath the library, which if you remember from the lease, is in our review, is something we'll share and cost on. But it's not, it's not incidental, because you can't just go in there with this spray washer and spray, no. None of this stuff can go in the creek, so we had to set up a boundary with a, like a large sponge that absorbs all the dirt that there was. As of, you know, Sunday, Monday morning, they were all cleaning out, I was like, the cabinet there had gone from basically three or four people to about 20. And there were, probably for the last week or so, there were probably about 20 or so people in that, so that fence will be up probably for at least 30 days until we can do a deep clean, repair, they would like to repair the damage down to the skate elements that are in the underbelly, is what we refer to it, and so they will repair the skate elements in the underbelly, do some patching on some of the tile work, and I think it's probably gonna be there probably until about halftime school, that's how. And then hopefully, we'll see more skate. We've cleaned it before, we cleaned it a month ago, and the skaters returned immediately, and then the campers also returned relatively immediately. Skaters and the campers, you know, they have very separate interests, right? So, you know, whereas the skater is a camper, it works out perfectly, but there was only one of those. Everyone else, the skaters come and they turn away and go back, so it's not really complicated at all. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. It's Sam's team, it's a cleanup, the cleanup team that does all the cleanup around the creek, because they're lots of, it's managed through the utilities department, so same management, the other ways, manage the Sam's.
Are the people familiar to you? I mean, are they regular?
I know most all the people that were there over the last couple of months, yeah. It changes the group that was there, you know, there, you know, there are people who stayed throughout the entire time, and that was probably four to six of them, and you know all my name, and then there are other people that box in and out. So principals, they are there, I don't think you say his name, but, you know, he's a fairly decent guy, you know, he's down with his luck, but anti-dogs and anti, not apparently using alcohol or anything like that. So that was not, initially, it wasn't much of a concern, but, you know, it was only one of basically five or six cabinets in the area. And they did some damage, and I don't know who's responsible for that. But yeah, so Monday, we knew it was coming, Monday morning, they also were aware it was gonna be, everybody was cleaning up. But yeah, it's, you know, there was human feces in the playground nearly every other day. So it's not, it's not ideal, right, like, it's, they don't, but yeah, it wasn't like, there was a gentleman who had, you know, did leave a couple of weeks ago, but basically, it was kind of like, you know, it was a rave party, I don't know if he came by or not, but like their eye-cave a lot of the time, so we had painters here late one night, late, 3:00 in the morning, the party was still going on. And so, and it was interesting, right, so the conditions that are existing after hours were like, there were people coming in, in cars with blankets and joining the party, so not residing there, not using this housing, but there was definitely a big party going on. With an app system, I'm not suggesting that was the four or five guys that were there, that guy was not actually staying under there, was running a party, and it's not entirely clear to us, but, you know, they also, it's not like, I don't know, there's not a polite way of describing it. I think a lot of people think it's, you know, associated with like, hobo sitting around the fire in a, under a bridge somewhere drinking coffee. They're, you know, they're able to tap into the electricity, yank wires out, rewire stuff, so it's like, it's not, it's not an unsophisticated community in terms of how to use all of the resources that are there, and that's, that is what was going on under the bridge. And I'm sure you saw complaints on Nextdoor and everywhere else, but they've been persistent, really, for the last month. And the presence in the park two weeks ago was much heavier, several of those groups, the groups that were distributing food have mostly left, there were daily distributions of the park system, stuff like that, that was coming out of the campus. They clearly had funds to do such, and they packed up and moved away a Sunday ago, so we could go last Sunday. They packed up, the little night left, they had done that as the workers, or the county, or all of Massachusetts. I don't know what their view was, but they moved on, and that, the, the campus kind of broke up after that, but it has been a lot of trash, and at least several of the campus, not the one necessarily at the library, a lot of illegal drugs. I mean, legal drugs, yes, underneath there, yes, there were legal drugs, but not, not so many illegal drugs. Yeah, you wind up knowing way too much about what's going on in the street.
We're getting bumping, I mean.
So there is right now apparently a shortage of fentanyl, that's raised the level of tension in the area, so there's a lot of tension among some of the unhoused who, you know, previously could score for three bucks, coming up for a day, where now they're not know where the cost is, you know, three times or four times the score for alcohol. So it's created some tension among the drug-using unhoused community that's down here. It's not, by not, by, by no means is it all of them were using drugs, and there were some, like the guy who was under a block or year, two or three of them, they were no drugs, no alcohol, they weren't illegal. Why?
Well, it's my good experience and.
Yeah, you know, it's, this is like, this is living in our society today. You know, we didn't have necessarily terrible experience with, with, it's certainly the biggest mistake you can make, and I did not intend to report on this, but then I looked at the window, I saw the fencing, I'm like, alright, the fencing went up today. You know, it is a constant back and forth, and, and it is something that the staff of the library deal with on a day-to-day kind of hourly basis. So yeah, it's, it is a real thing. And, you know, now I assume it's gonna taper down for a while, and we'll see where it goes from there.
All right, good. Thanks, David. Yes. So what did you have in mind related to Library Foundation?
Well, that was a placeholder that I forgot to take off, but I did get an update from Chris, if you, I can give you two seconds. The 50-year gala is coming up September 26th, so hopefully you all attend. They have commitments for 26 out of the 33 tables. Kim's firm bought one table, thank you, Kim. David, I bought a table, several other people. And if you'd like to sponsor a table, you can contact Chris or, if you want to. And then they voted in four new board members, Alice Brown, Kavita Sideconnect.
No, that's.
Sideconnect, Kristen Centani, and Julie Yates to the board on, on May 9th. And Lisa McClellan has joined the Boulder Library Foundation staff as their new admin assistant. And she's in a role, she was working for nonprofits for 10 years and has a master's degree in nonprofits, arts administration. I met her last week, very nice person, she was walking by, that's how I met her. And Amelie, yeah, and that's it, so. That's it, for the Library Foundation, that, I didn't mean to put that on there, I just forgot to take it.
So it's possible to buy individual tickets?
It is.
It would be possible to buy individual tickets, and it was also, I think his question was more whether or not the board itself wanted to instruct us to buy a table for the board.
Oh.
And you're welcome to do so, right?
Oh, okay.
It's a scale, the money goes to the foundation, but it's, I mean, certainly if that was the will of the board. So that you and a guest could come, or, you know, you guys can figure it out, you can if you want to, and certainly that's, I think that would be, it's gonna be a night, a nice night, your presence would be welcome there, and certainly, you know, we can definitely afford to buy a table if the board chooses.
Was there an idea floating around, and I made this up, that perhaps it could be like an employee recognition opportunity? Like if we go out a table and there was, and invited some?
So I'm gonna, I will invite senior staff that would like to, if they have an interest in whatsoever going, and then they can come. And then we'll, we'll open up, well, I'm gonna bring my wife, but otherwise, like, we have, we have seats at my table that we can.
Okay, okay. So is the library staff buying a table? Is that what you said?
No, that's not.
It's whether the board.
I personally bought a table, but that was for, to get senior staff, if they wanted to go, they often use, the cheap tickets aren't cheap. I mean, they're, I guess, whatever, 125 bucks a seat, and I don't know that if we can point that, so like, that's what I did to my table, so.
If, if the board bought, I, I, you know, that's.
If you bought a table, could you offer it to them as well?
Right, I was just thinking, like, if we did buy a table, could we offer it as a, like, would, would there be an opportunity to like work with? Maybe to make it a recognized staff, like, staff who've made an extraordinary contribution this year or something, or in the first, in the year of transition, and like invite them to come as guests, or?
I certainly think you could do that if you wanted to, it's an after-hours event, and so.
Yeah, fair enough, yeah.
Staff won't be getting paid to be there, and so I, it would be a line of things.
Okay, do we need to reboot?
No.
Okay.
I'm, I mean.
Just an idea.
I guess the, the table would be for board members, and if they've ordered, you guys just want to get your own ticket. I'm asking you, because you'll be on the board, and they're 125 bucks plus your spouse or whatever, so if we get a table, it's 10 people.
So isn't that considered a gift, isn't it that our gift of?
But if you're purchasing it for the board with the board's funds, because you're not, you're not giving, you guys are serving, you're not giving, you're giving a gift from some outside organization.
But if you're bringing, like, I don't have to, but if you're whoever that other person is, isn't that like a gift to somebody else?
Yeah, I think you probably, I'd say my personal thing would be just buy our own tickets for it. What do you think, Sam?
Yeah, I mean, I can't afford a table, but I can buy a ticket.
Yeah.
You're just saying that because you already bought a table.
I think you all have seats, because I'm telling you, like.
Doug doesn't have any friends.
I don't have any friends.
I'm gonna be in the same boat as Doug, so I imagine there'll be plenty of seats.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so, but individual seats are not, tickets are not on sale, just tables?
The individuals, yeah, just the, actually, like, the tables, I don't even think are on sale, these are all pre-commitments that he's pre-sold.
Oh, okay, good.
Well, I guess the tables are on sale, you're right.
The planning committee's meeting next week at tickets.
And then they're gonna probably open up individual tickets.
Okay, okay.
You will all have a ticket.
Right.
No matter what. It comes from me.
There are vendors in Ohio that bought the table, right, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna pay a ticket for it.
Right, so.
Same for a table, I think there'll be a lot of individual seats or something.
Okay. So we've passed on the idea of buying a table as trustees, right? Is that as a body, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it on the update, on that update. So trustee matters, update from trustee selection process, what'd you have in mind there, Doug?
So just to give an update on what happened on April 5th, obviously, we selected two new board members, our weekly stuff. The committee selected two new board members who are sitting here tonight. They also, they asked us two things, you know, to, to, to put a big effort into recruiting, you know, next year, especially, you know, with our emphasis on equity and diversity and people in the county, since we're losing our mom in the county. So, you know, and so, because the two people we, they picked are city folks, so hopefully we can find, it doesn't have to, but, you know, a big group. And then the second thing, so one of the things on that was, we'll have probably in a few, maybe in June or May, they're gonna come in and talk about all your outreach efforts, we talked about that, remember?
Program and events.
Program and events.
Is doing a presentation on May 28th.
Yeah.
In general, to report on recruiting and hiring.
Yeah, so I thought, one of the things is, they did a bunch of outreach as part of the trustee thing, and as one of the, you know, as board members, you know, working hard to actively recruit candidates, and one of the ways we could do that is attending some of these programs and events, speaking to the participants, you know, you know, telling them about the board, you know, asking if they have questions, and just kind of starting making those like personal connections, because a lot of these events are with like Outbolder County, or the NAACP, or, or El Centro, Amherstod, and so like, just these different places where, thanks. Another thing is, so, so hopefully, as we go through the year, you know, we can pick some events that, you know, we want to pop into and, and, you know, just talk about the board and what we do, and, you know, that kind of stuff. That was one of the things, that was just my idea, and so we might talk about that a little bit at that May 28th meeting. Or the four opportunities for board members. And then the other thing is a joint meeting, which I don't think we have a date yet, Cecilia? Okay. Any luck on that, or how's it going? They just, are they been non-responsive, or?
No, they are.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We just have a settled one, they need some.
So who have you talked to? So I think we just need to have a conversation about that, because we had, so it was Commissioner Claire Levy who brought up the question, or the thought that she didn't know how things were going, or what was going on, and wanted to just have a better sense of how we were doing and what we were doing, and that connection, and thought that it made sense, it would make sense to do something jointly, to have some kind of update session or engagement that would involve not just an update, but some dialogue with us. And it could range from either an update that we would make to the body, to county commissioners, or, and update to city council, or something jointly with both bodies and us. And that would seem really complicated to schedule and get in place. Right?
That's what I understood your instructions to be, and so that's what we're attempting.
So that seemed like, I mean, that.
So we would do, we would hold it at county chambers, that invites the council, and then board members, county typically meets during the daytime so that may present the conflict of the board. We're aiming for late July, early August, we would ostensibly then present the annual report to them, because we have that too many days. And so that would be a part of the presentation, and then I think it's just really kind of an open dialogue between the board and trustees and what council members come and what county commissioners do. You know, if we have a county commissioner, I think all three of them will be there.
Yeah.
I don't know how many city council members will be in attendance, but I think Sam will come.
Yeah.
And it will be recorded and, yeah, and open to the public.
And I'm hopeful that most of you will be able to make it, I mean, the county does typically meet during the day, so it's, it'll be a workday.
Yeah.
And so that will be somewhat a little bit complicated.
Yeah, well, that would be very cool, I just didn't think like that could be possible.
That's what we're trying to arrange, and I think, I mean, council and county and library commission had done this in the past, so that there was a meeting, and it was successful, county chambers, and there was a dialogue and conversation about a lot of different things. so that there was a meeting, and it was successful, county chambers, and there was a dialogue and conversation about a lot of different things. Uh, and I think the majority of city councils showed up. There was, like, I think there were five of them. All of the county commissioners there.
When was that?
Uh, twenty eighteen or nineteen.
That was before I was, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and I can't remember who's request that was, I don't remember.
Where was that one held?
County chambers. Yeah, it's a nice room.
Yeah.
It's open to the public, so we would allow for public attendance. We publicly notice the meeting, which we're required to do, and the public would be able to come. I, I don't believe the, I don't believe they allowed the cabinet to ask questions. Like, there was a, like, what they do with studies, it's kinda like a study session.
Yeah, no public comment.
No public comment, that's right, yeah.
So.
That would be nice to do, I mean, it'd be nice to be engaging with them.
So that is what that point was about, so those, those two things.
So the other thing related to outreach in, you know, it was, you know, this conversation, the part of it that I was in was about diversity and engagement and, you know, that challenge in, um, recruiting and engaging folks of diversity, you know, on this and other boards of the city and county and, um, and I said to Doug, like, it is, you know, not an easy thing to do and not easy to represent that agenda and, you know, in complex issues of boards like this. And, um, that, you know, we need to look at other ways to do it beyond having a pretty list of every organization that, you know, works on diverse issues, and it isn't just enough to have that list and say that we're outreach to these groups, but we need to find ways to involve people in, you know, subcommittees and processes and help them get to know us and, and find ways to, you know, engage with people and help them know what we do and, and, yeah.
Can I ask Kim a question related to your point?
Mm-hmm.
I understand that sitting on this board cannot be a paid position, but can subcommittee people be compensated in any way? Because I think that's one of the barriers, honestly, one of the barriers, is just like volunteering your ti, volunteering your time if you are from a community where you need to work, you know?
Yeah, you'd have to employ them, but you could do that.
You could comp, like, tech, maybe compensate a subcommittee member for their.
Expenses.
Pay their.
But you're gonna have a hassle of.
W nines and stuff. Okay, I just feel like that's a, as I understand it from people I've heard from, who, who may have the time, but it would, the opportunity cost of not working would be too much to be able to do it. Um, so, just a thought, just throw it out there.
Still run the risk of, is like, when you wanna be on the board, you know, you think you'd be unpaid, that would be the only, if they went to.
No, I mean, just if they wanted to, like, participate.
Oh, yeah, participate.
Like, in some way, I mean, I, I, the board, there's the statute or whatever, but I feel like there's, has to be ways to overcome some of these barriers. I mean, I just think there's specific barriers that prevent people from, from joining, from diverse communities, or like, people who are young, or people have young kids, like, there's just like a variety of different hurdles to overcome, and I wonder if it was against the law.
Yeah, there's, there's now a really complicated internal process where you have to post positions internally instead of, but a gift or you vote.
Well, I mean, I think, like, honorariums or, or, you know, gift cards or, you know, giving, you know, or providing childcare and, you know, other support for people, you know, volunteering their time is common in a lot of public processes that I work on. I mean, that's not unusual for volunteers. People are volunteering to be a part of a committee, they're not employed, they're volunteers, they're not employees. So I don't think we'd be stepping into that piece of it.
Or are you saying that we would have, that we would have to step into that piece of that?
Well, you're gonna pay them.
Give them, but an honorarium is paying, right? I mean, giving them money is paying them money.
Like a twenty-five dollar gift card for participation?
It'll have to be a.
Is not paid. It, and they're six hundred dollars, right? In a year's time, that's a IRS rule for W nine.
This is something to consider, if you're looking to figure out.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's the voluntary, it's like, you know, we reduced our committees to two or three, two committees, and I think, you know, I think we need to look at broadening the committees and look at subcommittees with, you know, expanding volunteer opportunities to others in this year, so that would broaden the bench of resources and people who can learn about what we're doing.
I think where we've had less success in the past is where we have had, uh, defined a project or an objective and defines a timeline. So we can look into exploring what things, I mean, but nobody, the, the rub with the city, I mean, with the boards and commissions, and I think also with the library board trustees, is that there's a position of privilege. You are signing up for, uh, volunteer work for like a five-year commitment, four or five-year commitment. It's a big, it's a big ask and that, and, um, yeah, I think the city is aware of that. I mean, I, I thought our initial round of recruitment for the board was remarkably successful, but, uh, yeah, um, it's gonna continue to be a challenge. Uh, it is, uh, you have to have the timer, uh, because like, it's a hard zone, right? Five years, no money, a lot, a lot of stuff to do.
People so sick.
Three months and an objective is, would be, uh.
But I think, and that's the kinda program, and I think this is something we're, we're gonna look at, because, and, um, that's the kinda program where they come in for three months, we get to know them, they know us or, or the board, whoever the board is, and then, you know, when it's recruitment time, we say, hey, we, we think you'd be a great fit, you know, apply, you know? And that's the kind of engagement, I think, you're talking about, the short spence and then, so I think that's the kinda program. And this is what I was saying with, like, the outreach programs and the different stuff going on.
Yeah.
Is us making those connections with folks in person, you know, at these events, and, 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 and starting up relationships so that we can recruit these folks to eventually, you know, think about applying.
Yeah, yeah, but, and I, but I don't wanna be in any position of thinking we are anointing or selecting, you know, people to apply.
It's just a pipeline, it's just a pipeline, though, right?
Yeah, yeah. Because I was never waiting, nobody ever asked me to apply for anything, right? You know, and, yeah, so, you know, it's, you know what I mean? Like, you know, so I want people to be able to just get exposure, right? And, and, and see that this is an open process, right? And, and not wait for somebody to invite them, right? And know that we are, you know, always looking for people to want to share their resources and time and talent and have exposure to this effort.
I think you can achieve both ends, though, right?
Yeah.
Exposure and building a pipeline and getting a place with the board, I mean, I feel like.
What I just don't wanna say, no, I just don't want people to think that only if we invite them, they'd be an applicant, right?
Right.
Like, that, that gives them a boost up, right? I don't want anybody to think that we add any extra, you know, weight on their application in any way.
Hey, you know, I think it's an important topic, and thank you for raising that point. David, can you give an example of, you said that what has generally worked in the past has been, you know, defined, short-term committee to discuss X by X date, like what?
Library district advisory committee, literacy and outreach, uh, strategy groups, both we have. I, we had, I don't even remember how many applicants we had for the library district advisory committee, twelve were selected. Uh, the literacy and outreach committee, thirty-seven, uh, different community groups and leaders from those groups participated in that, but it was done in three months, well, months.
Master plan, focus groups.
Master plan, obviously, we have.
Does it ever occur at a more, you know, a lower, like, we convene a group of parents from Boulder Meadows to talk about children's programming at Novo? Like, do we ever go that, uh, granular, perhaps that's not the right word, but what you're talking about were high-level, you know?
We have talked about, I mean, so we do an annual, we, we just started, right? Last year, I think, an annual program meeting, and I have asked them to consider whether or not they would bring in members of the public, which is, that would be something that they would, obviously takes some prep time, but most of their work is done in a matter of a couple days. Uh, and so that would be obvious, so we can bring in members of the public to offer feedback on the program, on the rules.
And we're gonna have, like, the Gun Barrel Branch coming up?
Yeah.
So, like, the Gun Barrel Branch Advisory Committee of Community Member and Members might be something. I know you talked about that, it's not my idea, so, I'm repeating, but I think that would be another, a good place, you know? You know, so, anyway.
That's my second idea.
Good evening, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
I mean, and so maybe in this first year, just because.
Buenas noches, la biblioteca se cerrará en quince minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
I switched, David, I switched.
Oh, no, no, I was just thinking, like, in this first year, just because of what we were doing. We didn't have all of these other avenues to, you know, sort of outreach to and, you know, engage with, but it seems like in this second year, we'll be doing all these other things, and there'll be more opportunities to have other people involved and more people to tap and.
So one of the things is that, that May twenty-eighth meeting, I'm hoping to bring is those, you know, opportunities, some of those opportunities for us to engage with staff, you know, or with, with staff and with community in this way. So hopefully, we will do that, so, that's all. That was all I had for that.
Okay. Library director evaluation process, we're talking about it here, and then we're doing executive session two?
So one is to talk about his contract, that will be in the executive session, and this, you had brought up, um.
Some issues related to just the process?
Yeah, just the process you, you had talked about.
Yeah, and so, um, so I was tasked with drafting a position description, which I am doing. And I wanted to, so, one of the things I wanted to help shape was to look at a full package, not just to match up with what had been the job description that came from the city, matched up with a library district position description, maybe, that had been, I don't know, shaped or copied from a contract that came from where?
I don't remember, but somewhere.
Yeah, but wanted to help shape something that we owned that looked like something that fit with the character and the personality of the individual that we ably hire. So want to just get that in place with goals and measurements of success that has David's input in the contract and in the position, and to really, like, incorporate what he thinks about what's there and aligns the goals that, um, he wants to achieve, that matches up with what came out of the evaluation, what we thought would be goals. Um, and so, that's the piece that I think needs to all be incorporated into, um, the role that we play and what I think we need to get in place. And then it's, I think, more than just the salary and what that number is and what is aligned there, but I think we need to look comprehensively at, like, what flexibility we should have there, like, you know, his compensation package. And maybe it's, you know, maybe somebody that wants to have more leave time, or, you know, maybe we should look at a bonus system that aligns with the goals, that, you know, instead of adding that to salary, maybe it's a bonus and incentives that align with, you know, something else. But I just think we should be more progressive and look at that and not just, you know, sort of match up with whatever it was that came from, you know, our decisions that we had to make last year and just keep pushing that through and thinking that that's our limit and what we are thinking. So that's what I was communicating to Doug, and so that's what I still plan to be working on and towards in the next few weeks.
So on the piece about goals.
Yeah.
You're gonna take, you know, there was, as you saw.
Yeah.
Goals from every director. Are you gonna try to synthesize those into a top three, or do you need assistance with that?
Yeah, but I was, I thought we were still waiting for, so we had.
Yeah, we wanna have a discussion with David.
In a break.
Yeah, exactly, but after that, I, it is common, obviously, and this is what we did at the Board of Education to craft. The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
And I think that we should have had a.
La biblioteca se cerrará en diez minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio.
For security, and, you know, and you two took on the role of, you know, capturing and the evaluation piece, you know, in, in that place, but I think there should be a standing evaluation committee, and if we had an executive committee, that would have sort of been a role of that committee, but we don't have that. But I think we should have some kind of procedural piece in place, and most typically, we'd be working with, we'd have a, you know, either legal counsel or, or an HR professional type person working with us too, that would be a part of our effort and.
Yeah, I just wanna be, be sure I was clear on where you were going with the goals.
Yes.
Yeah. The other stuff, a lot of that is new to me and outside of my experience. To offer incentives like bonuses would be something I would have to talk a lot about and think a lot about. Uh, you know, opposed to having the discussion, but would like to just get some goals that the director and the board can agree on, get a contract in place, and, and then look ahead to next year for, you know, I think we had talked about our director evaluation, mirroring or modeling the evaluation process that David and his team hoped would in place, is that clear? Yeah?
For the rest of the staff.
For the rest of the team, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I kind of agree with that, Sam, 'cause I think we only have two meetings and we're supposed to have a contract to do. So I think, I, I think my personal is the same thing, like, let's get the job description and goals and review that, and then, I like the sound of some of that stuff, but I'm not, not super psyched about bonuses, because I think those can be just played, and, you know, but, um, but I do, you know, I'm willing to have the discussion about it and have, go through the, you know, um, evaluation thing. So I think we've just set up a committee after this contract is set for an evaluation. Who, who would set up the process and then conduct the evaluation next January or whatever.
Are we still contracted with the employers' council?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they, can they benchmark, I know you said that it's publicly available to find out how much other library directors in comparable districts make. Can they benchmark how they're evaluated? So like, are, do directors undergo like a separate, different trustee evaluation? Or do they, are they a part of the normal performance valuation of the entire team? And then directors just are the people who do the check-in meeting or the Herfons meeting with the director? Like, are they able to access that information? Because I think that.
We, we have for all library districts, and it's, it's all over the board.
It's all over the board.
And I've looked at the link that you sent me, yeah, and it, it's hard to tell, right? You know, because some have the foundation under the director, right? The foundation element, and some do not, and it just depends on the number of facilities, and so you can't just go by, you know, sort of like the base salary piece of that, which is like different. And the only reason I have bonuses is because in the public sector, you know, some directors are aligned more with bonuses than, you know, salary, because it, you know, that, that base salary is so significant that every time you do a bonus, it's such a significant, you know, can be impact, you know, percentage that, you know.
So.
I'm comfortable with that.
So can we agree to? So, so can we agree to, to do the job description?
I mean, I'm still, you know, I'm still doing that too.
And have that ready by next meeting for the whole board to review and give input on the existing contract that we have. And then for final approval on the twenty eighth. And then we'll start a committee, evaluation committee. Either that or it can go to governance, we'll see what Sylvia Postle says, but, because they are...
I don't think it's a governance issue.
Yeah, or evaluation issue, yeah.
I mean, that's why I think it's not board governance.
Sort of, you know.
It is.
Yeah.
You know, and...
Who's on that committee now?
Well, I don't know if it is.
It was you two.
We don't really have a personnel committee.
No, and it was because we're not doing more stuff.
Yeah, so maybe there's a new committee.
But I, we probably should.
And I had taken on the job description in the April second meeting or whatever it was.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
I mean, it needs to be aligned with the job description.
La biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
So, it sounds like the first sort of step with some time urgency is just get the contract and job description done for the approval on the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
But since you're already doing something related to that, I don't wanna volunteer Doug's time, but since you're the president and the vice president, could you two, like, take a stab at creating goals with David and bring those back to the board as the goals against which he would be evaluated at the end of the year? I mean, I feel like it's as a next step.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're doing in executive session.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Oh, we're gonna do that session.
Well, I don't know if we're doing all of it, but we're just gonna get his feedback and then...
Okay, oh, okay, but we're not, we're not gonna, like, agree on those today. Maybe, oh.
If we can agree on some, I mean, I think they're pretty aligned, so.
Okay, okay, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. But then, who's gonna, who's gonna shepherd that after that?
We are.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah. Well, Benita's gonna, after she's gonna take that and draft a document and then have that ready. And then, yeah.
Yeah, great. I just wanted to tell you, like, I just saw it as more than just drafting a job description. I just think it needs to be integrated with these things, I wasn't trying to, yeah, push it to somebody. Just trying to integrate it and loop it into, I just see it as a big responsibility that needs to be aligned. So that's what I wanted to share. Okay?
Awesome, great.
So, update on North Boulder Library meeting. And then, is there a North Boulder speaker?
Uh, thank, for the, you mean for the opening?
It just says North Boulder Speaker. I don't know.
Oh, that's next.
I know, but, you mean that's a speaker here?
That, we'll see if one of the trustees wants to talk. Oh, Sam?
Yes.
Had expressed interest in talking at the open house, or the...
Oh, is that what that means?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant a speaker here at this meeting.
Someone told me that you expressed interest in speaking at the grand opening of the North Boulder.
Well, I would love to just, for a couple minutes, just welcome people, introduce somebody, yeah.
Yeah, why wouldn't we all wanna do that?
Well, if you want to, I won't be there, so I, I'm not a deal.
Yeah, why wouldn't we wanna do that?
So.
It's great.
If you want to introduce someone, I, you know, since Sam lives up there, you know, say a few words.
Yeah, like a few.
Yeah, a few. And then if you wanna introduce the mayor or whatever, you're welcome to.
That's great.
We'll fit you people in if you wanna have a couple words.
So somebody will develop a program for this?
We are developing a program now, and I would like to get an input from you guys, whether you want to all speak or one speaker. We can always have...
I think we should have a role there, yeah.
Well, and I, and so I'm asking the board, so I hear you. Sam has kind of agreed, but I don't know that anybody else wants to say anything. And you're not gonna be there.
I'll be uptown.
I will be there, but I will just be a guest. So, I don't know if you want my input. I mean, I, I like, I, I think everybody should be on, you know, introduced, but I like the idea of Sam saying something, he's such a longtime resident, I mean, you, it's five minutes from your home. And, I don't know, I do like the idea of you being a representative, but I do like that.
I'm so happy that I would like to communicate my ideas and that's, and introduce somebody, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Sam, if I'm not mistaken, you were involved in the eighties when they were...
I got in safe, where they were pushing to get those...
So I've lived on one side of Yarmouth or the other since nineteen ninety-two, yeah, so. And that, the branch is the reason I'm here today is the need for that, but, you know.
Okay, so...
Just makes me happy to see that it finally happened.
Well, fine, Benita, it sounds like you, you have interest in saying a few words. That you'll be...
If I'm around, I'd happy to, yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna say a few words? You don't have to, it'd be brief, I think.
I'm happy to just cheer the...
There's little kids there, you know?
I'm gonna be there.
Don't get the Gettysburg address, but...
Stoked.
And thank you for setting the date that I can attend, I appreciate that.
That's right, two hundred and thirty.
Okay, I thought you were just saying, like, there was a speaker here, that's why I was asking about that.
Ah, no, no, no.
But now I get it.
The library is open. Thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to seeing you again.
I can make some remarks.
Yeah, so more to that later, and so you have a little bit of direction.
Atención, la biblioteca está cerrada. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy y esperamos verlos nuevamente.
Oh, the update on the North Boulder Library meeting, we skipped that.
No, I know, I'll go back to that.
Yeah, do you wanna...
Well, we, you know, you saw the correspondence, Julie from a group called the NOBO Alliance had written to the trustees. Johnny responded. We set a meeting at the NOBO Branch that David and Doug and I attended with three representatives from the alliance, including Julie and two folks who live in Dakota Ridge. Julie lives in Holiday. And I think it was a productive meeting. You've seen the NOBO Alliance's notes in the packet, and they were embedded by the three of us and I think accurately reflect the discussion. And I thought was, I felt very positive about it. I mean, they came with specific concerns that you could have guessed, you know, the underpass, the bathrooms, you know, different access issues, security issues. And I think David did a great job of walking them through all that we had planned. And also, the other thing I really appreciated, David, is you kept bringing it back to how the success of the branch is dependent on the community using the branch and being there and engaging with the library. And I thought that was really the right message.
Can I ask a quick question? On the opportunities piece, were, were there any, like, commitments made? Or did we just come into exploring them, or were you just kind of like, these are things we'd like? What is that list?
Law and command, and this is kind of what I made sometimes. I am glad they go with the community group and all other people to approach a landlord about a police substation.
Okay. Okay, so of those things, that was...
Yeah, I told, I told them about China, how they're always defensive playground.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you don't want offensive playground?
Uh, we went back and forth on that, absolutely not. Like, it is a community playground.
Oh.
And it should be accessible twenty-four seven.
Oh, I, I meant, like, just the little tiny fence, like, I thought they meant, like, so little kids couldn't run off.
Uh, you know, I, that's not what I wanted, like... You know, we did talk about having a fence playground, that was early on in the design phase.
Oh, really?
The community was kind of evenly split on it. There are parents who wanted their children to be under constant surveillance and us to try to at least create a semblance of guaranteeing their safety. And then there are other parents who are a little bit more, like, you know, they understand that they have to be there.
I like blocking my children in the fenced area and not paying attention, so.
So some of these are, like, more serious than others in terms of, like, what we would, what you would consider, what we would consider.
Uh, you know, we, we engaged the community on that very topic, and where we landed was no fence. And that was a consensus, because there is a, you know, there's a, you know, there's a whole park that's gonna be going in next door. But at the time, there is no, there are no other playgrounds in North Boulder. And it was as much of a demand for it to be a public playground as there was for people to, you know, be able to contain their children.
Are there, I thought, I just think it's crazy. There were hours of, on the playgrounds, like, isn't it, like, sunup to sundown? Like, doesn't it have, like, an hour, you said twenty-four seven, but it is...
Well, the, the city will have the adjacent line, so I think here it goes eleven P M. The downtown part goes eleven P M.
I mean, all of these things on here were just sort of considered, they weren't, they weren't, like, tied.
I just think it's funny that, like, David, David's like, absolutely no fence, but they still put it as a bullet.
Oh, we didn't...
Not an opportunity.
Well, probably they got, they, I was asking them what they meant by a fence. I think that's probably where that, and, and like, why they wanted it fenced and what the, like, because I was like, you know, I don't know. The one on M E G fine is fenced, but mainly because, I mean, they don't want your kids running into the creek from there, but like, you know, anyway. It's, that was just the other thing. And the, the half-wall thing is one thing they talked about, but I don't think it would go in there, and...
Once they, once they see the building, that when it's furnished and looks real...
We're not gonna...
They won't...
Yeah, they won't even see it, yeah.
Even now, there's, there's already shelving in there, it wasn't before, until there is a half-wall, it's a...
Yeah.
I have no exact... But so the space, once it's furnished, will not seem at all like what it did before.
I think it's gonna be amazing.
It's fantastic. And I had been misrepresenting the slide. I had told several people that the slide began inside the library and ended outside. I was abused of that notion, and I will never say that again.
Well, Sam, we can do it, I'll show you the way to get in. There is a place that will be covered.
Trustees only.
Do we need to, like, pause the meeting while we...
Yeah.
What happens here?
Oh, Cecilia's... I don't know, IT is not my...
Cecilia, new computer.
She has a recording.
She has a recording.
We're good.
Well, yeah, I think it was a good meeting and a way to open dialogue with a group that seems, is a legitimate group of neighbors.
You guys were the perfect folks to be there.
Did you get any animals?
Not yet, or I haven't seen anything, but...
They didn't put me in their Slack group, so. Um, okay, next thing that everybody...
Yep.
You saw my note on the advanced planning agenda, hopefully, that I emailed?
Uh-huh.
That's the document that we'll use to, like, plan our weekly, our bi-weekly meetings. We kind of got off filter. Kim, our regular meeting is supposed to be the third, and next week is, or next, in May is the second. And so, I don't know if we have to notice that differently.
Nope.
Okay, we, we noticed it on the website.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, but after May, we will return to meeting, well, you won't be here.
Yeah, you keep looking at me.
The first and third week of the month. That will be the, we'll try to keep that regular, because there'll be some meet months where we don't meet both times. We'll at least keep the regular meeting, but maybe not have the special meeting like July. Well, no, we will meet, but like, if, like, we're meeting too much or we don't have a lot to cover, we can skip some, but it'll regularly be the first and third week of the month. And then, if you, you know, wanna look ahead or see what, you know, stuff is coming up or you wanna put something on the agenda, just email me or go in there and, and put something on there and let me know that you did it. So, so that you, you know, you can, potentially, David and I and Benita will probably meet every Monday around three-thirty to, to, maybe the, the week before the meeting to, like, hash out the schedule and talk about stuff. And then maybe on off weeks too, when we can. I mean, if you wanna attend those meetings, you can notice, we can notice them and, and, you know...
So you only meet the Mondays before the Tuesday meetings?
We're scheduled every week.
We're scheduled every week. But, but maybe we'll get back once, you know, I'm pretty new to this, so. But it's every Monday at three-thirty, either online or...
Maybe like we get to appoint words.
Yeah. So we would have met last week and not this week, you know, just for scheduling purposes.
Can you get a signature?
Yeah. So, and then that advanced planning document, have you guys got email addresses yet, or...
Yes, but I don't know if I can actually access the emails that are sent to them yet. The address exists.
The address exists, okay. And then, there's like a Teams, it's not super easy to get around in, but once you figure, I mean, you figure out, you can get into Teams and I'll, we'll show you the folders and that's where that document exists. And, or you can just, like, go to the email I send you and click on every, you know...
Have you approved the approval?
They've both been ratified, yeah.
By bodies?
By both bodies.
Okay.
Just need to be sworn in. That brings me to the retreat. One Saturday or Sunday in July, I think I put in there the dates, it was like the... And half the people aren't here tonight, so it's not really worth it. So, either the thirteenth or fourteenth, twentieth or twenty-first or twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of July. It'd be nice to do, I guess, there's two questions.
So I'm out all of the first ones.
You're out of all July?
I'm out July eighth to the thirty-first.
Okay, okay. All, all, just the weekends or during the week too?
Week two.
Oh.
I mean, it's not that I couldn't get on, but so...
No, yeah, yeah, but, so I guess the question is...
Just call Sam, so he'll...
And maybe we bring this up and then we...
Can we pause for a second?
Sure.
Not on the agenda, which I thought was...
I think we're pausing here for...
Cupcakes.
We're not, I'm sorry, I'm just passing cupcakes while you talk scheduling.
So maybe, it may be a bad time to chat scheduling because everybody's not here, and so...
So, but will you just talk about, you were thinking about a two-day retreat?
One-day retreat.
Oh, okay.
Just like last time.
Oh, okay.
And there's two questions. Do you want to have a retreat? Is it worth it? What, there's three questions. What would the topics be? And I suggested a few here. And then three would be, if so, and, you know, when? The, um...
You're kidding me.
Yes. And I think that it's either gonna have to be, unfortunately, it'll probably be, we can, July or October.
What happened to August?
Well, August is possible, except that for the foundation members that are on the foundation, they're having a retreat in August, and I think it's just a lot to give up two Saturdays in a month.
I think you should just do a doodle.
Yeah, we'll do a doodle poll. And see what...
Because you've got two people I've sent in.
Yeah, it's gonna be really hard to do it right tonight. But does everybody think a retreat would be useful again, or, Sam?
Um, I, you know, I, I think at the time we were discussing when to have it, I thought it was, you know, I wanted to include the new trustees, just the timing was weird. So, I do think it has value, but I also wanna hold calm and Andy Phillips will have value.
It definitely...
Or if you just wanna, you know, forge ahead and get your, your updates and your backgrounds as needed from David.
Can I add two cents here, even though I'm out?
Yeah.
I do feel like part of what was really hard about starting work last year together as a board was that we didn't know each other at all. So even if you could do, like, a half-day or three-hour or something, like, maybe it's not a full day, if it's, it's so hard to, if it's very hard to schedule, or two half-days or something where you could spend some time getting to know each other as well as do some business, I feel, I feel like you should, you should.
I agree.
Just from my experience on this board and also just as an HR professional, I feel like you can really benefit from that. Just my two cents.
I agree with that. I would think, like, even if it were August and if we did a Tuesday meeting that maybe started in the afternoon and just did a longer Tuesday meeting, that would make sense.
That could be possible, maybe.
And...
I mean, I like what you said, Jen, I agree with that, connecting that. It makes a big difference. Four years of being at the table with people.
Yes.
It's a lot of meals.
Yes, yes.
The, the normal schedule, the advanced schedule... The, uh, the normal schedule, the advanced schedule calls for a retreat in July because of this reason, because y'all are new and, because we all have new trustees.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So we'll, we'll plan it and, uh, we'll send out a doodle poll. Uh, it sounds like you're gone.
You're back for the thirty-first, I think.
Okay, so maybe that first weekend in August.
Are you gone that first?
Ah, it's going to happen.
Okay, you got it.
What about, what about June?
June is okay, I'm just gone for two Saturdays of it, and you're gone, and he's in.
For two weeks, and I think it could be bad, but I don't think I could get a facility here, but we could do that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and maybe we do a third, a two, you know, a Tuesday.
I think that's great.
And a Tuesday, and then people don't have to, we just go for four hours and.
And make sure to do something fun.
Okay, we'll do trust falls.
I'm just, trust falls, ropes course, out under, in the under valley, I don't know.
You should do publicly noticed bowling.
Yeah, exactly.
So, okay.
The rest bore, yep.
Um, all right. Uh, and you, and you're going to be out, like, on vacation from the eighth.
I'm going to be in Europe.
Europe, okay, so that's going to be impossible.
That's the challenge.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm out the first week of June, but that, that's just not the.
I think we'll just do some, we'll try to the, like, a Tuesday in August, like a Tuesday afternoon.
Or even September.
Or September, yeah, okay. All right, um, yeah, that was the whole thing.
Legal counsel updates?
There aren't really any updates there, but I did include a copy of the executive director contract as it currently stands, as well as the pretty much re-craft of the lease for Ben Barrel. It still contains way more information than it needs, but I did send it back to the attorney and have had no contact. Tried to call him, he didn't call back, so we'll see, hopefully. If, were you going to send it to the realtor?
Uh, I will, with the permission. I, so I have to ask him if there's any input on their side, and he's had no, so, uh, I, I could send it to the realtor at the rule, and say, could you, I mean, it's really too real. I was going to keep asking, but if you need it.
No.
And there's the landlord in the house, but I can get the realtor to crack you, but I wasn't going to put that until I talked to you guys.
Should we move into executive session, Benita?
Yeah.
Dave, did you want to bring this up?
Not I will.
Oh.
Yeah, I handed out, uh.
The bill?
Uh, my bill earlier. Uh, David can go ahead and talk about it, uh, backwards, that's occurring right now in the state legislature.
In the last, uh, phase?
No, right.
It's the last phase.
Yeah, yeah.
The House passed it last night. So this has been in the works for probably a year or more, uh, and it kind of mirrors in some ways, uh, started with a broader group than mine, but as a result of a couple of legislators concerned about book banning around the country. To initiate legislation in Colorado, which they intend to do, include the school libraries and the public libraries, uh, there was no movement or agreement from the school libraries, they were, through all the public libraries were kind of in a, uh, you know, it became a seventeen-page document. It shortened again before it actually went back, but it was, it has been contentious. Uh, we, I, and you have been asked to play a role at this point, but it did pass the House last night. And the gist of it is, they are making it a, um, an, an issue around potentially banning books, magneticism, rights issue in terms of providing a certain degree of, uh, access to materials. And I think then also importantly, it's, uh, removing the ability for, you know, to criminalize librarianship so that while, so librarians, myself and other librarians, will become prosecutable for books that they purchased by location. So both of those are good. It was contentious enough within the library community, mostly urban libraries who said, oh, this is fine, and rural libraries were like, we don't have a webpage, and we have one, for example, that they didn't like some of the barriers, and so I kind of stayed out. I was busy with district transition, but I mostly stayed out of it. Uh, I, you know, so, you know, they are, you know, there was a call today, you know, to ask our trustees to weigh in, call the representative, on this quarter bill. I think the bill is okay, I don't think it's great, it's not by no means perfect, um, but it does establish some groundwork, um, uh, I think that's in the library committee, it's, uh, it's, uh, important, uh, especially what I don't think is, uh, at the right time, but most of all, it's important going forward, uh, considering the changes.
There's a lot of procedure in that.
The E F was pretty nice in the end.
Sorry, so, so, sorry, go ahead. So, Junie is, this is the Joseph, right? Okay. Question, um, what are the implications for the, so you just said everything is covered in the handbook already, or have more changes will be, need to be made to the handbook based on this?
I need to, I need to, are there changes?
Okay, okay.
I don't remember exactly what the. This provide process for.
It'll put it on. Uh, we already have, as a person, we have, uh, made those challenges public. That's contentious issue currently, and that's legislated now, so it's why that it would have to be a public act, but there's a, a challenge to be made public, um, we have a process. Uh, there's, there's new legislation in there about people were banned, but, uh, you know, some libraries, it doesn't advise to that, it's almost like that responsibility resides with the counties, uh, that's not how our policy is, it resides with we, um, and so, like, uh, you didn't like the decision. You didn't like it, but there's not, it, it does reside with you. You can say, I don't like that, you made the decision, or you didn't follow the right process, but our processes, our, our whole, our whole challenge process is about process. We don't, we don't say we love the content, we don't say we hate the content, it's just about validating the process that we went through to select the books, and you've argued for that, Paul.
Okay.
So are there things you would like to see changed in this bill currently that's written?
No, um.
I mean, this, House sponsors, I'm a constituent, let alone being on this board, I'm happy to advocate.
I thought it could have been two pages, I, but I, I think it's fine. There's so many libraries that wanted this and others that just feel it's a burden, and I did not want this to be an issue that splits the library community in any way. Like, it's, this is the, you know, principle number one. We can't be divided on how we see the legislature legislating. I'm also suspicious of legislators who want to do good. Uh, I don't, I've never, I don't know how they fully understand what the implications of some of the things are.
Right.
And, and I think probably the burden will fall on a lot of some rural libraries that have to institute policies and put things in place that they don't have currently, but they'll do it, which is good. It's, it's good practice to have policies.
And to be clear, it's already through the House. This is in the Senate.
Yeah, the Senate.
Has the Senate be done or is?
Yeah, so the Senate's questions, yeah, the Senate's questions today were mostly around the timeframe by which a ban is, is in effect, right? So you can ban a book, and so they're trying to limit the, uh, timeframe by which a book would be banned, so then what they're saying, what they had questioned today was, I think they were trying to narrow it down to three years. Uh, so three years, if a book was banned, then you can buy the book again in three years if you want to, or subsequently, if it was not banned, another challenge could come forward in three years. Uh, you know, it's fine, it's not ideal, it's not perfect. It seems like it could be a lot simpler, but, you know, but our policies are good, uh, and, you know, you can, we can refresh them again at some point, we just, I didn't refresh with Tom and Andy just before the meeting, so it's like, we do have a, uh, you know, a robust process. We just revised it with the library commission in June of last year. Uh, you know, it's not, it's not side-taking, it's not, you know, it's, uh, but there is also, we don't stand for something that would make it not possible to criminally charge a librarian, which is, I suppose is still possible, just probably unlikely at Boulder. I like that part of it. I think that that is where, the litigious part, where state legislators are getting involved in allowing for the criminal prosecution of librarians, that's also happening in some states, any. Thirty-seven states have something which they can prosecute librarians, or, or something where they're having to check, um, so, I think it's good.
Can you, can you attach this legislative tracker on Kelly?
I just threw that in there for you, if you're, if you want to look at it.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's just, um, we track all of the bills.
Okay.
And Kelly put that together.
Got it.
And there are a couple of library-related things in there, or tax-related things, um, just so you can glance at them if you're interested, I mean, I want to.
Okay, okay.
Thanks. For future reference, and this may be something we get into at retreat, right, so there's frequently calls for trustees both to attend the legislature, uh, to, for lobby day, there are opportunities for you to go forward and speak to legislators down at, uh, the House, to Congress. There, we are also sometimes, this would be one, asked to ask our, uh, our trustees to lobby their legislators for certain things. We have not done so. Right, last year was, uh, for our first year really, kind of at this, and, uh, in the past, when it was the commission, um, they weren't really in a position to do so. So the city has a lobbyist, and we did obviously work with the library lobbyists as well, but the commission never, the commission investigated lobbying on certain issues, but never pursued them. Mainly about around banning guns.
Right.
Which there was no appetite for.
So when you get a call like that, who, you, do you communicate with the chair or the president?
Yeah, if that's what you'd like, for the future. At this point, we haven't had time, or, you know, Bill, and it's already through the House. They wanted people to call your senator and say, like, we love it, and I don't think we love it.
It's, it's basically, from my perspective, the common law was going ahead just fine, the case law, and doing everything we needed, and then they jumped in and codified a bunch of it and added some detail, and so it's like, to me, that just raises a question. If I go into court and wanted to fight this, I would say, well, apparently they didn't mean the same thing as what the common law was doing, or they wouldn't have done this, and then people, so, but, you know, like David said, it's, it's fine.
Oh, so funny.
Yeah, the one good thing, the other, another good thing it did was, in the Guinness in case, the Court of Appeals said that the names of objectors to materials had to be redacted, and.
And that's the other thing, that's.
This is the opposite, so, this is good. And the question in that case was, what did the legislature intend? The court said they intended redaction, now they've said, we don't intend to.
And that's a big one, because people could honestly challenge those, I mean, not, not honestly does, but honestly to the public, and that's not something that's going to, but what it did was, it's too complicated. The, the courts decided that challenging a book and asking for it to be removed from the collection counted as a library use, and so their privacy was protected, uh, which in my mind is kind of like nonsense, yeah. So somebody that comes in and says, stop having these books, that doesn't, in my mind, constitute a library use.
It's an anti-use.
Yeah.
All right. All right, all right. So you're going to executive session?
Yes.
Yep.